Is this correct?
I'm sorry, way wrong.
Let's bring our meeting to order. Why is Mr. Billy Wayne Chastain, if he'd lead us in prayer?
Let's all pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for what you've done for us, given your life that we could have this opportunity to gather here tonight. We pray, Lord, that as we go through this meeting, that good decisions will be made, and in accordance with your will, help us, Heavenly Father, to follow you and to be thankful and to give you praise for all the things that happened to us, in Jesus' name we pray. I pray that your will will be done. Amen.
It's good to see everybody here tonight. It's nice to have a packed house. What we need in the city is everybody knowing what is going on. So we'll start with a, I think we need a motion for the approval of the last meeting's minutes, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Seven.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. The next item of business will be, I would need a motion for approval of the bills for March payment.
I make a motion that we pay the bills that are due for March.
A second, please.
Seven.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we go to the new minutes, to the new business, excuse me. And Mr. Lee Carter's going to read the business license ordinance for the second reading.
An ordinance to establish fees for business licenses in the city of McHesel, Georgia, and for other purposes. Whereas the city of McHesel and incorporated municipality of the state of Georgia established the need and authority to grant business licenses inside the city limits of the city of McHesel, Georgia, see ordinance 98-074. And whereas the city of McHesel established a tax on all persons, firms, or corporations doing business in the city of McHesel, see ordinance 98-075. And whereas the city of McHesel acknowledges that costs have increased, and whereas the city of McHesel desires to modify the business license amount and provide that the fee can be set by resolution. Therefore, it is hereby ordained by the governing authority of the city of McHesel as follows: Section 1, definitions: The following words, terms, and phrases, which used in this article shall have the meanings ascribed to them in this section, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. A, administrative fee in the component of occupation tax which approximates the reasonable cost of handling and processing an occupation tax. B, location or office includes any structure or vehicle where business, profession, or occupation is conducted but shall not include a temporary or construction work site which serves a single customer or project, or a vehicle used for sales or delivery by business or practitioner of a profession. C, occupation tax means a tax levied for revenue purposes on persons, partnerships, corporations, or other entities for engaging in occupation, profession, or business in the city. D, occupation tax certificate means a document issued by the city acknowledging payment of occupation tax and administrative fee. Section 2, an occupation tax is levied upon businesses and practitioners of professions and occupations with one or more locations or offices within the limits of the city pursuant to OCGA Section 48-13-7, upon out-of-state businesses with no location or office in the city but with employees or agents engaging in substantial efforts to solicit business or serve customers or clients in the city as follows: An annual business license fee of $100. Section 3, administrative fee: In each occupational tax there shall be included an administrative fee of $25. Section 4, the city shall not require the payment of more than one occupation tax for each location of a business or practitioner. Section 5, a business or practitioner subject to an occupation tax by another local government and claiming an exemption from or limitation to the occupation tax imposed by this article shall submit documentation as to current payment of the occupation tax to the other local government and the basis of such tax. A, if a business or practitioner with no location or office in the state provides to the city proof of payment of a local business or occupation tax in another state which purports to tax the businesses or practitioner's sales or service in this state, the business or practitioner shall be exempt from this occupation tax. B, if a business or practitioner with no location or office in this state shall only be required to pay occupation tax to the local government in the state where the largest dollar volume of business is done or services performed by such business or practitioner. This limitation shall only apply when the business or practitioner has provided to the city satisfactory proof as to the applicability of this subsection. Section 6, if a business or practitioner commences business in the city on or after July the 1st in any year, the occupation tax for the remaining portion of the year shall be 50% of the tax imposed for the entire year. Administrative fee shall not be reduced. Section 7, real estate brokers shall be subject to occupation tax pursuant to this article only if they maintain a principal or branch office in the city. Section 8, every business practitioner and location subject to payment of the occupation tax levied by this article shall display a current occupation tax certificate in a conspicuous place at the location of which such certificate was issued. If the taxpayer does not have a permanent location within the city, the occupation tax certificate shall be shown to any police officer upon request. Section 9, any business required to obtain health permits, bonds, certificates of qualification, certificates of competency, or any other regulatory matter shall first before the issuance of an occupation tax certificate or a regulatory fee certificate show evidence of such qualification. Any business required to submit an annual application for continuance of the business shall do so before the registration is issued. Section 10, all ordinances, resolutions, or other acts or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed provided; however that any portion of said resolutions or ordinances not in conflict herewith shall remain in full force and effect. The invalidity of any section, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall not affect the validity of any other part of this ordinance, which can be given effect without such invalid parts or parts. Section 11, this ordinance shall be effective on the date of its approval by the council.
Mr. Rest of it.
Any other questions? Would need a motion to pass this.
I make the motion.
Second.
I say the motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Paces. Okay, the next quarter of business will be Mr. Bill Wayne's variance request. Sir.
How you doing? So last November, I purchased the property, 220 Woody Street. During that purchase, I noticed on our plaque, there's a portion of the property that was designated as abandoned road, and I knew that the seller had been using it as driveway. So I asked my real estate agent about it, and she said that Ms. Bonnie had asked for a variance from the city to be able to utilize it as a driveway. So she said that once the sale was complete, that I would need to do the same to come to you guys and see if there was an opportunity for me to continue to do that. So that's why I'm here, just, and I have a plaque, you want to see what it looks like?
Yeah.
Mayor and council, this is the same lady by the name of Bonnie Love that I went out to with Keith Nicholson on February 13th, 2024, and Billy Wayne Chastain and Jason Woody approved the request for the same variance that she requested for. And I guess he's bought it from Ms. Love, correct?
Yeah, in November 2024. I have a deed that you wanted to do, if you want to see that too. I do have another question, though, and I'm not, I'm only, I'm not asking, I'm just asking if it would be an option, does the city ever sell property such as that?
The city can sell property, but...
I don't know that we ever have, I haven't ever known that, if anyone here knows.
Like to buy some.
And I'm certainly fine with a variance to use it if you got, we're okay with that, but it would certainly be a consideration if...
I have bought an abandoned street. It's been late 80s, early 90s.
The city can sell property, there are specific requirements and notices that have to be given to different people, but the adjacent property owner is one of the people that can buy.
Yeah, and at the end of this road, mayor and council, there's a big oak tree unless it's been removed.
Right here?
Yeah, right there. The road don't go no further because it's all wood.
Right, yeah, it actually stops back here.
Correct.
It doesn't, I mean, it's just, well, it's beyond that point. And even my neighbor, this is all abandoned, that's his driveway that he uses, and he's the only other house on the street past that point.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with granting a variance. Maybe let us look into selling or your purchasing of it.
Sure.
We would need a motion.
I'll make a motion, grant a variance.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I certainly appreciate that. Will the paperwork be, for that be available to pick up later?
It'll take a few days.
Yeah, that's what I'll, if I have a few weeks, we'll find back. As far as...
Leave your contact and we'll reach out.
Yeah, who do I give that to?
Delete.
Just let me know. As far as, as far as the selling of it to you, I mean, there's a, there's a chance I might be interested, I'd rather probably not pay additional property tax, but it's a, it's a small portion, but certainly appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give up my valuable seat. Anyone?
I think it's yours.
Anyway, move on to the old business, the next one would be the, or the ordinance that we were looking at.
Haven't got any more information on it?
As of yet.
So it's still tabled?
And leave it tabled, that's for right now.
You can make a motion if that's what you want to do.
We would need a motion to continue to table it.
Make motion to table it.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? The next order of business is the L-Mid project. That is the, the local maintenance improvement grant that is mostly for the right-of-way in roads, some storm drains even. You can go as far as street lighting, the right-of-way, just all things, but it's all considered road on that. Is there any?
So, yeah.
Yeah, I think y'all have already...
Yeah, didn't we talk about Green Street?
Yes.
But, so the Green Street project, I think, came in to be too much money.
It did, it came in way over the grant price, and me and the mayor got in with Johnson's paving a few weeks back, and they've wanted to patch all the water leak holes, I guess you'd call it, that's throughout the city, and do some more paving and stuff down towards the park, and also the grant will buy signage to post your speed that flashes like we've been wanting to try to get, and so this grant's going to provide the lighting for those speed limit signs that show you how fast you're going, so we can get them put up on some of our city streets in town here.
I believe it shows you the posted speed limit.
It does.
And then half-assed you would be traveling.
So, something that we can now own instead of having to borrow from someone else.
Any, any other questions here about that? Okay, one to the reports and other business, so council members, anyone have anything to bring?
I'll think, I'm just going first.
You're up.
All right. I hardly know where to start, got a few things to talk about, or just to mention. One of the things that we have been waiting to hear from is TVA, which we have not heard from TVA. I gave them a call and talked to one of the ladies that was here, and she said, "We have talked about it, but we've not made any decisions." So, all of that TVA money that we were trying to get, most of, I guess all of it was going to projects in the park. And there's several things down there that we need to get done, is to get the summer, people's beginning to use it more and more, and I don't want to wait until it's wide open and then have a bunch of work going on down there, try to maybe get some stuff done. So I talked to Mr. Dillard, who is going to remove the tree, and for those of you that may know or not know, there's a big tree down there, right where they put the bolts into the river, and it is leaning out over the river, and the other night I was, I'd been down here to drug and gun to get medicine, and drove up through there, and all the geese was parked along the edge of the bank up there, and so I thought, well, I'm just gonna run them things off, so that's what we're trying to do. So I got out and walked up there, and they all left, but I was walking the sidewalk back and came by that tree, and it feared to me that, that ground, I don't remember how, how far it was below the, but it's about that far now, below the edge of the sidewalk. I think it's slowly pulling its way down, so I talked to Mr. Dillard, and I'm gonna have the money in the park budget. I didn't want to spend park money on any of it, I was hoping to get the grant, but for $3,500, which is really a pretty good price to remove a tree, he is coming to remove that, and he's going to do that, not this Friday, but next Friday, so it'll be in two weeks. And the reason that the push is on that, if that tree falls over into the river with these storms, then we're really, we're gonna have trouble getting it out. And so he will come and remove the tree and clean it up and grind all the stuff up, the city has, we have agreed to use our trucks to haul the stuff to our dump, and so it'll be cleaned up and good, and then, once that's done, I can get a little dirt back in there to smooth that corner up and put maybe some flowery bushes or something there, but that's, that's one thing that's going to take place. You want us to continue on? So the next thing, this is interesting, the Veterans Administration, Mr. Jim Collander is the man that is over the veterans in Blue Ridge, as well as Paul Hunter, but Mr. Collander has been asking for a meeting to come and talk, to, to, here, to come and talk about a program that actually is, the citizens has to want this program, and what it is, is for veterans, if a family has a veteran, you can become part of this program by buying a, and Michael's got him down there, I'm not gonna go too far here, Michael's slowing back here a little bit, because he's got a lot more on it, and we'll put those things up on the pole up in the park and have a nice thing up through there for them, and they're like a vinyl, you'll see it, they last about five years, they belong to the people that put them up there, they can come and get them, take them home, or whatever, so that's, that's pretty well, that is one thing, and then, I'm gonna go a little bit further, and then I'll be quiet and Michael can have it. Out of that meeting and out of other meetings, they want to have a Veterans Festival in the park, that, or, we put on a program down there, they do, and up there around where the flags are at and all that, and have programs and invite speakers, we talked about maybe getting Doug Collins in here, Johnny Chastain, have food and some entertainment, just have a big day for the veterans. Now then, that's all I want to say about it, and I'm gonna ask Michael if he would be more specific.
So this program that the veterans are wanting to put, wanting to do inside the city is called Hometown Heroes, and it's banners that you hang on the light posts, you come in town, here's one of them, and family members can buy these. So, it's for law enforcement and military personnel, so if you have somebody in your family that you want to honor, you buy this through the Veterans Association, it's about $200 to get the banner and the brackets to hang them, and they hang them up through town on the light brackets. And as far as the festival goes, that Billy Wayne was talking about, they want to do Veterans Day down there and have food and vendors, all themed around the veterans, have all the recruiting offices come for each branch of the military, have the Georgia National Guard come with their band, I didn't know they had a band, if they do, and, but they said it'd be something they'd not look at for next year, possibly towards the end of this year at the earliest, so, but this is a program I think would be very nice to honor some of our veterans in town and first responders, if anybody'd like to do that. There's an application in here if the city council would like to go through this program. Everyone of y'all have a folder in front of y'all, a different colored photo with the same information in it that I'm presenting to you now, and there's an application in the back, and basically, if someone comes in and wants to honor their loved one, they fill out that application, it's here on the very back, it says what branch of service, what war they resent, and you put the, they pay for the banner to be put up, and then I submit that to the veterans, and they get these made and send them back to us. I think it's very something, it'd be neat for the town. Obviously, like I told them yesterday, a lot of our decorative light posts through town here is fixing to be, especially on the main part here with this highway project, but like our decorative light posts going towards the park, the street lamp posts at the park, and going down maybe East Tennessee Avenue and stuff, I think this would be nice to go ahead and put those on.
So I guess, I'll just...
Need a motion to do that?
I guess a motion, you want to opt into it and allow people to have the option, because the city's not paying any money, if I understand right.
No, the city is not.
The city's not paying anything. I would suggest that we take a month, take a month, council, take a month, look this over good, talk about it so that we can really understand what we're talking about, and then come back next meeting, and if everybody agrees, then we can somehow know to get it out to the public.
I think it's a good thing.
Nobody opposes veterans' drive, so I think it's a good thing, too.
We would need a motion to, on the first party talked about on the tree work, we'd need a motion to have that done and pay for that.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? And that carries. Okay, any one else right now have anything?
Yeah, I was gonna bring up, maybe stealing your thunder here, Terry, but I was looking at the email, we got, we've been working with the state on the engineering cost, it's been very expensive for the city. I know Terry's been pushing very, very hard, when he first come in to be, become mayor, we talked about this, and he's been going and writing letters and going down to the state Capitol meeting, and through that effort and several calls we've been on, they've agreed to pay a lot of the, it's 100% of the engineering cost on this next project, and the construction cost, which is $300,000, which is a huge gain for the city. They're also considering our previous expenditures on engineering costs that we have paid already, so like I said, it's in the three-quarter million to a million dollars. So appreciate your effort, hard work, and updating everybody on where that's at, because that's been something that's, that we've been pushing for a while and finally getting a little bit of traction on.
Okay, any, anyone else have anything to bring up right now? We received a letter, another letter from our friend G. Doc, about all the situations and all the options we had on the bridge, whether it be temporary or permanent. The, of course, the concrete bridge is going to have to be repaired, there's no other, no other option with that, so they were looking at that, so that's got to be done, and they were concerned about the temporary flow of traffic, especially for the emergency vehicles. We had talked about some of that before, and where everything is located, we have them here in town, there's one in Salem Road, there's a new one being built at Mineral Bluff, there's one in Epcot, one right up the road, so for us, we were not as concerned about, worrying about getting fire protection and ambulances to different people, there's a lot of, a lot of different ways we can do that. So the second option that they had talked about with us before was the Trust Bridge, which all of us call the Old Bridge, and that is in Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, so that one cannot be touched. So that one cannot be touched. That one will not. As far as G-Dot says, please understand that's what they're saying right now. I hope that's the way it goes. The other option, which was option three, was a detour bridge. And I'm, I'm not going to read the whole thing. They said they were mostly concerned about that one being through the park and being a hazard to anyone there in the park. And so therefore they thought that that one would not be a suitable option. So we got back again to option four, which all of us are dead set against. The temporary bridge being up east Tennessee, trying to go toward the water plant. And that's the one they say they think they can make work best. Now, I'm being, I'm very much opposed to that. I think that's one of the most dangerous things that we can do for our citizens up there. It's going to be bad enough when it comes down, when they close this and you have to come around Hillcrest. And or it, it gets detoured around through Kingtown. Either way, on those places, they could go either way. So that was another thought of ours on the L-MI grant about the signs for speed limits. To try to really help enforce that, just because of the locations and everything. That bridge, I, I just, I just have no, I don't understand why any of, anybody would ever think that would be an option. I mean, you cross over the river there, you got to go up a 10 or 12 foot bank just to get back up on Highway 60. You're going right through another business. So that's another business that gets tore all to pieces during that time. So we have already started calling, requesting some meetings with them. And they asked for meetings to get our approval. And I'm, I'm just not for that. I'm just, I'm dead set against that one. I just don't think it's good for anybody in our city. Especially all the folks that live up around that way, just because of traffic. And you know, like before we said, we hadn't even considered at one time about what it could do to Kingtown. It's the same identical thing. Turn it back to kitchen and send them up and come right out up here. That's another residential place that all of us, and I'm an older adult now too. You don't expect to see the type of traffic that could come out there. So rest assured, we're going to fight that as hard as we can. And call everybody that we can and complain. As soon as I have some other news about that, I will make sure that it gets out. And so this letter was the 21st. And like I say, in calling other people, they have, we've talked to them about why we think that's, that's the worst option possible. And we even asked them somewhat about what, like Glenn, put in the newspaper, just fix this bridge. Pay for everything that you've got from us so far so we can get back in very good shape. Money wise, especially in our water department. Pay for all that, pay it 100% and forget it. Let us work out our own problems with the traffic. I think that is a large group that we have in here with suggestions from all of you and us. And I think we can work it out as a group. I really do. I mean, patience is going to be the key word with that. But I don't see why they don't just do it now. They've got it tore up anyway. Just fix it and be, be done with it. I mean, slow as they work, it'll be finished before this part is. It's a, it's, it's really frustrating for everybody here. And you know, not ignoring any of the other issues we have here, I promise you. But for us right now, the way the money's going out on that. And I did ask them. I said, well, why can't you do that for us? And I said, why aren't you giving Tennessee $9 million? And they told me, they said, well, that's the only way we can get it finished. I said, well, consider this, we're done then. If that's, if that's all it takes is we don't have the money to finish it and you give it to them, that's what I'm telling you, we can't do it. So just finish it and we're done. Didn't get a real good response from that, but I mean, seriously. You know, we'd be back in, in pretty good shape and be able to really tackle some of the other issues that, that we have. But you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at on that. And it just wouldn't have been right not to say anything about it. Because that's what we need to do is let everybody know. That's why I'm glad we have crowds. But when, when I first came here, there were a lot of empty seats. And there's not now. And whether we all agree on what we're doing or disagree, that doesn't matter. It's just that we all give each other a chance to say what you need to say. And be respectful to each other about it. And you know, respect your opinion. It, it's okay to not agree. But in the end, we need to work it, work it out. So that's, that's kind of what I'm saying about, about those things. So any, anyone else have any other comments on that? Because I mean, I'm, I'm not the only one.
I think we all agree with that. Because that, putting the bridge up there would be, would not be good. I'll quit.
Be a public safety man here.
I just don't see how we can get, keep everybody going in the right direction.
Their choice of words, their choice of words that is going to be possibly dangerous to people in the park. That is so, that is so rotten. Whenever they turn traffic through all of McCaseville, just like Terry mentioned, downhill Crest Drive. All the way up, all the way up to East Tennessee, people coming going both ways. Down through Kingtown. And they talk about one little place up here at the church. They need to get somebody else to write their, their business. That's, that's just, and, and the fact that they came here, what the big could do, we're going to get the opinion of everybody and make sure that we get it in the right place and get it. They didn't have any. I'm sorry, I just. It angivates me whenever the state. They're going to do what they want to do. I mean, that's it. I'm sorry.
Well, we're going to fight it. So I'll tell you, we're going to do everything we can to keep that from happening. I mean, when I told them that, I said, it's got to be way cheaper than you building the 10th bridge. Just pay for it all and help us get our money back, get our town back where it needs to be. And we've all even talked about what it's going to do to our merchants. Now, I'll tell you, that's a, that's a big thing you're asking the merchant to not have full service for everything for 18 months is what they said. 18 months, I believe. They said two years, I believe, was that what they said. But they were going to put it on an accelerated thing, whatever. I don't know what that means. So we really need to, excuse me.
Isn't that the bridge we're talking about now?
Accelerated?
Yes, the, the concrete bridge, the concrete bridge.
Well, what about this road thing? How long is that going to go on?
I don't know. It's been going on since 1977.
Oh, I believe that from the last, they never stop. It's like, seriously.
First, it was supposed to go through Kingtown, by, by your place, where it was supposed to go. When I first found out about it. So that's how far everything's kind of got off. Killed her on that. But please rest assured that we are going to fight it. And you know, any suggestions, we're be glad to listen.
Is there any kind of weight or size restriction on? I, I mean, I know you can on 60, but turning up on 60 on Blue Ridge or Hillcrest? I mean.
We've not got my sign. We'll jiggle it back up on Hillcrest there at Mr. Powers' place.
With these new signs we'll be getting, we may replace that with one of those.
That will be awesome. Because I haven't been walking lately. It's too dangerous.
Yeah. So we're, we want to do that. And that gentleman kind of moved the sign. Forgot to ask, but hey, there's worse things. So anyway, I'll kind of back, back to our agenda before we do public comment. Mr. Courtney, do you have anything?
No. If you guys have anything that you want me to do, want me to work on, make sure you reach out to me. And I know you've got a lot of things to review that I've sent over. For the meetings during the month of May and July, I will be here, but it's going to be either by virtual or by telephone. I'll get with Denise and, and we'll get that set up. But I'll be here. Just know that you won't see my pretty face.
Clark, say anything you need to bring up at all?
Just the House Bill 581. I got that letter from the Elections Division. That was all. They received all their paperwork and that's all good.
Okay. I believe we talked about that last meeting we did opt out. And we do have all our paperwork in. So as far as we know, we've done everything that we know to do right now on that. So our tax rates as far as what we do will not be affected by that. Our solar taxes. We've done everything we can do on that. Okay. Mr. Michael, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a bunch of stuff. So next week will be my ninth year as your Public Safety Director here. In saying that, I'm drafting a letter to G-Dot, not only as your police chief, but also as the coordinator for the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. That I got appointed under Brian Kemp when he got elected governor. This project that G-Dot is wanting to try to push down our throat is going to cause a major traffic issue for our citizens and our public safety. When I was appointed by Governor Kemp to keep the eight counties that I cover and coordinate over to keep the highway safety safe for the citizens and try to reduce traffic fatalities, I can promise you if we put a bridge down towards the end of East Tennessee Avenue, there's going to be major traffic issues. There's going to be traffic accidents and there's probably going to be a fatality. So I'm going to draft a letter and submit it to G-Dot and see which one's got the most weight behind it. But that's a file that I'll take myself with the Governor's Office. We answered 8,589 activity calls last year. Just got our stats in. So far in the past 30 days, we've answered 731 activity calls. And most of this is traffic related. You're probably going to see a lot of my police officers writing tickets. I told them to write them. We've had almost two workers killed up here on this project. Speed limit's 35. It's deemed a construction zone. That means we can write you for 36, not the 10 that we have to give you, which would be 45. We have had several vehicles come down through here at 65 and 70 miles per hour. And we've almost had people flagging traffic get ran over. So imagine what it's going to be when we start deterring traffic downhill Crest and Kingtown and those areas. So I'm asking the public to please, I was going to get with Glenn, please obey the traffic speed limits and notice that we do have a lot of people working down here. We have our annual Easter egg hunt, April the 19th, at 2 o'clock at the park. If anybody wants to participate in that, bring Easter baskets and pre-filled plastic eggs. Last year we had about 3,000 and they was gone in a matter of minutes. Those kids was able to get those scarfed up pretty quickly in their baskets. I'll leave that for next month. That's all I have.
Mayor, I, I forgot something.
I believe you did.
The worst thing that I forget. Easter sunrise service is on in the park this year. Easter sun, it's the 20th. Last year was the end of the month.
Starts at what time, sir?
Well, I don't know. Because the time is, last year I had to do the same. The week before I got up time to get there. So I'm going to have to do that again. It's probably going to be around 7:30. But let's wait till the next meeting and we'll get everything together and, and. It's going to be good though.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Anybody have anything? Okay. The public comment time. We're, we're ready. Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. I'm Matthew Cole. And I just want to say on the veterans event, if you'd like to keep me posted on that, we'd be happy to see how we can facilitate with our property right next to the park to make it a great event. So just kind of keep me posted on that. That sounds amazing. It is that time of year, as many of y'all may know, that McCaseville is home to America's only two-state 5K series. We have three 5Ks throughout the year. The very first one's coming up in April. It is the Trout Truck, April 26. So as we've done in last year, city councilors and any city employee who is interested in participating, you don't have to run. You can walk. You can moonwalk. Doesn't matter. You can just flounder along. We would like to have y'all participate and that is on, 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 on the McCaseville Business Association. So no excuse, not come on out. Okay? We'll look after you there. And then if y'all want to come out and do the gun or have a few words, be more than happy to have a representative from the city, mayor of course, you, or if you want to designate someone else. That's, that'd be excellent. April 26. So I will let you all. There you go. Just so y'all can take a look at that. Now, you'll also notice on here, very proud, this is our fifth year doing it. And the Riverwalk Run Series, we are very proud to have this little bridge as the icon. And anything that y'all can do to save that bridge is just meaningful.
Yeah, it's not going nowhere.
Okay. That's great. Okay. Because then we have to change the whole icon. Just kidding. No, it is so historic. And those of you who may not be from the area or are new, that bridge is a treasure and it, it needs to be saved, I, I think, at any cost. So. Anyone here who's interested in running, come see me and I will give you a discount to participate. It is a great, fun way. It's only a 5K. And it goes down around here, across this old, the, the bridge, over into Tennessee, back over here, Tennessee Avenue runs right along the river, right over to the water plant, turn around, come back in at the park. It's so much fun. And don't think of it as three miles. Think of it as one mile three times. Okay? So come on out, have some fun. Thank y'all for everything you do and yeah, appreciate it. Scooters, absolutely. If you have a four-legged friend or if you want to bring a stroller, that's fine too.
One more thing, Mayor, that I think the citizens need to know. On this highway project, I guess y'all, y'all have seen them come down through town or saw them come through town. The sidewalks are fixing to be tore up as well. It's going to cause a major issue, especially with all these events that we may be having come up. Don't know how I want to go around it, but we'll have to figure something out. So as soon as I figure something out, I'll be getting with Glenn and try to let everybody know the safe way to do that. Especially when we have the Fourth of July coming up, the Trout Trot, all this stuff coming up that our citizens and our tourists use the training, the sidewalks to get in and out where they need to go. So it's going to be interesting.
Any, anyone else?
I do have a question. You had talked about a flag that you were going to try to get from?
Yes, ma'am.
Blue Ridge. What happened with that?
It, it's a?
Is it?
We, we found the McCaseville flag. And they had another flag that a person gave them in Blue Ridge. We met, what day was that? We met, what day was that? Two weeks ago, we met two weeks ago, and, uh, it was in the paper, uh, I guess last week, where we moved up there and, uh, had a picture taken upstairs, and, uh, they're actually going to, uh, put the thing in a glass case and put it up like we talked about it, and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask this lady right here to, uh, remember what we were talking about a few minutes ago, whenever you was telling me who I was on that list.
For my two uncles that served in World War II, Ralph Chapman and E.W. Chapman.
Mr. Collander, uh, told me that he, in searching for information to give to Richard, I mean, Jamie, Richard's been a years ago, to give to Jamie, he discovered the original list, and it had all the old-timers that lived in this area, and two of them was her uncle that's gone. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, I think, uh, your wife's dad was on that list, Tommy. Yeah, anyway, there's, it's very nice. So, it's, it'll be up if it's not up now.
It's in, it's in Commissioner's, uh, office area, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, you, you can request to go see it.
Yeah.
So, there's no issue about, about that at all.
Thank you.
So, um, kind of one thing for me, appreciate y'all being patient with our, uh, construction here, we need some extra room, uh, for records, and, uh, kinda with the small area we got here, that was one of the only ways that we could, uh, help out to have, uh, that done that way, so, uh, you still will be able to go in and see, and see folks. There's no, there'll be no issues about that. Hopefully, by this time next, next month, it'll be a finished, finished product on that. And one, one other thing, I would like to thank you, Glenn, for supporting our effort on trying to get our issue resolved, uh, with hopefully just no bridge and get our money back, and let's say we're good, and let's move on to other things we need to tackle and take care of. Those have been, just been a really big, big thing here. So, uh, any, anyone else have anything? Yes, ma'am?
What did y'all decide about the liquor license for Burr, Burr, or I guess that was it, Burr, Burr, one of those sales?
Yeah, we, we haven't yet, we've pretty much been tied up with this the last month when all this kinda got started.
Yeah, not that I'm a drinker of them, but I'm like, I often take my profit, I'm like, yeah, they just play morals, just have a liquor, let's go. That's what I'm saying, just, man, bring in the profit.
Anyone, that's a big group, so if you've got something, let's go.
I need to see if I can, where is a good place to get information on events and stuff like that, that are, I started a Facebook page.
Yes, sir.
And trying to keep people up to date on City Hall and what's going on in the city.
Okay, we should be able, you should be able to find that very soon. We, you know, we talked about changing the vendor that we were using, and that takes us just a short time to do that, but this gentleman is retired, so he has a lot more time, and he lives here to, to do that. So, hopefully, within this next few weeks, we will be able to have almost real-time things and changes that we can put on there. We, we know we're behind in that, and, uh, that's, that should be a good way. We'll put everything we can on, and even, you know, if we have to be closed for something or if we know, surely, when we do this, if we even have some road issues and things or something we know's coming up, maybe even got water out in a certain area, hopefully we can get that on there, and folks can look and see what's actually going on, but, uh, good Lord, our water folks, this last two weeks have, well, it's been bad, been really bad. The power guys that come up here, the contractors, not our local guys, uh, come up there and drill, we, we're required to pay them. And, uh, once you guys in construction, you understand that, the sewer's green, they had green marks all over the ground, they drilled right in the middle of it, didn't say anything until we go up through there and it's bubbling up, they drill right through the teenage silver. Took us ten hours to get it fixed. When we finally got there to it, we had to get someone with a larger track hole, 'cause where it was put out, right up above High Five there, between there and that strip mall, it was in granite, and when they blasted it out, when I was a kid, they laid it in a trough of the granite rock, so we couldn't move it around anywhere, it was straight through their act, and we had to put it back where it was. They got that fixed, the next day, they had six tines that got cut into.
Did you send them to the deal?
Water, water, yes, ma'am, we did. We absolutely did. We sure did. So, uh, yeah.
And would you mind if, uh, we started a live feed here?
Sure, that's up there, I'll tell you if that's what you feel like's necessary. You mean for our meetings and...
Yeah, and would it be possible to, uh, maybe pull a couple of questions off that live feed to, to give to y'all?
It's our first amendment, right?
Yeah, it is, you can ask, we're open, we're open book. Sure can. So, anyone else?
Uh, there is an informational meeting, um, next Tuesday at six PM at the Copper Basin Community Center regarding the whitewater center and rebuild, and, um, we'd love to see a good turnout over there. They originally, um, had the meeting in Polk County High School over in Benton, but since it's our side of the river, uh, we'd love to see some people come out and, uh, be involved in that meeting.
They building a deck?
They are, yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, uh, next Tuesday at six PM at the Community Center in Copper Basin.
They're looking for ideas, so we would like to shake those, some of those ideas, kinda like...
That's at six-thirty?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, if that's all, I need a motion to adjourn.
Nice motion to adjourn.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank y'all for coming, greatly appreciate it.
See, how we're positive thinking.
Work, work. State the bridge, which state, woo!
That's easy.
Winning lottery ticket.